Good evening and welcome to the December twelfth, two thousand twenty four, school committee meeting. Just returned from executive session at this time of like public order, the mobile call of school committee members. Michelle Perkins here.
Good night here. Will Horn here.
Diana Patel here. Now we'll move on to the public input. Members of the public are welcome to comment during the public input. If you're here or through Zoom, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand, you ask it, you keep your camera on, nothing's going to comment. And that you follow school committee policies for public input, including if you're no more than three minutes and only on topics under the purview of the school committee. And whether you're here or in person, sorry, whether you're here in person or on Zoom, please state your name and address for the record. Do you have any public comments?
Chris Potts, Seven Curb Street. I wanted to first congratulate Christine Power for an excellent presentation at last week's last school committee meeting. I thought it was, it was excellent, especially from more of an internal standpoint. This past week, I sat in on the DESI advisory council that has a district, went over their district review process. And it was, it was, it's a public meeting. It was incredibly interesting to listen to how the district reviews work and how they might be changing things. One of the things that jumped out at me, you know, if you're not familiar with the district review, they're required to do a review of every single district in the, in the state at some point or another. So they do a handful basically every year. It includes high performing districts. Most of them are more on the lower performing side, but they do include high performing districts. Dover, Sherburne, the whole district, including Sherburne and Dover were, just had one this past year. Westwood had one in two thousand twenty-two. I've no doubt Medfield will at some point have, it's just have a district review, either a targeted one or a comprehensive one. Some of the things that it looks at is government, leadership and governance, curriculum, assessment, budgeting and finance. And if you, if you read through some of the other district reviews that are on the DESI website, you'll see some of the common things that jumped out in those review documents. And some of the things that jumped out at me were, one, absence of evidence that school committee decisions were informed by careful and frequent review of data. School committee decision making that included using data for budgets and determining capital needs. Using school, uh, school committee using data to close achievement gaps. These were the things that were repeated in a number of district reviews. And they're the types of things that I think would be really valuable for Medfield School Committee to do on a regular basis going forward. We have a lot of great data, thanks to the work that Christine's doing. It's just that we as a community and the school committee doesn't really get a chance to see it that often. One of the other things that was noted was the desire by teachers associations and by school committee members to have more interaction as part of contract negotiations. Both school committee members and teacher association members cited concerns with the lack of sufficient collective, collective bargaining interaction. And that the interaction was mostly between administrators and unions. So I'm going to ask, and I, I have real concerns about the fact that we've had collective bargaining discussions, both for the start time and on other contracts. Where no one from this committee was appointed to be part of that negotiation committee and did not have a seat at the table. You're meeting an executive session on these contracts and it seems like that's the first time that you're really having a chance to discuss these contracts. When you really should be appointing somebody, at least one person on this committee to be at the negotiating table. So that's my feedback and I think it's just some areas that, you know, again, Medfield will be bound to be reviewed at some point. And these are just areas that jumped out at me that I thought would be good to convey to school committee from home.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone in there? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda this evening, we have approval and retention of executive session minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Approval of regular meeting minutes from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. M H, sorry, M H S student activity account, a new sub account request for the high school dance team. And donations of the amounts of one thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents from the MCP to be deposited in the WeLock gift account for the reading incentive program grant. Eight thousand dollars from the MCP to be deposited, deposited in the high school gift account for the Go Feet Therapy dog grant. Three thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixteen cents from the MCP to be deposited in the Blake gift account. For the connecting to our local environment, seventh grade community scientist grant. And two thousand one hundred twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents from Shutterfly Life Touch to be deposited in the Blake gift account. Did anybody have any questions or comments on anything in the consent agenda?
So I want to thank MCP for their, you know, their support and, you know, our teachers work hard on those grants and do the presentation. And MCP has been wonderful supporting our grants, so I just want to thank them for that partnership.
I was excited to see the dog one because I think we're almost, well, that means we have dogs in almost all the schools now, right?
For sure.
Pretty cool. Any questions, comments, or anything that people want to pull out of the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated?
So moved him. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next we'll go to new business and we, I'll send it to you, Dr. Marson, for the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey presentation.
Sure, I'm pleased to say that Dr. Russ Becker is here this evening. He will be, he's our High School Adjustment Counselor and he's done a lot of work, starting this summer and then in the fall, reviewing this data. He put together a wonderful presentation as he always does, and I know this is pretty interactive when he does this every couple of years. So Russ, if you're ready to roll, got some good, he's got some good things to report and obviously some things we always have to work on, as every district does.
Bear with me for one second, I gotta crash, course I was screaming here in a second ago. See how well I do with this.
He's coming to help.
Well.
Well done, Russ.
Alright, that is pretty much the gist of my capabilities. Let's go. Bang. Alright. Does that look relatively how it should, do we think?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Well, hi everyone, my name is Russ Becker. I'm the School Adjustment Counselor here, the school social worker, for those who are not familiar with that term. Just as kind of a brief introduction before we get started, this is my tenth year here in the district. I've been the School Adjustment Counselor, when I started, I was working between both Blake and the high school for, I believe it was five or six straight years. And actually, the position was created initially stemming from a lot of the data that we're going to see here. So this is data that I use pretty much day in and day out. I've been lucky enough to be able to kind of run the survey and really delve deep into all of this data. To better understand kind of what's happening from a mental health and a physical health standpoint within our district, from the kids' perspective. And I think, as we'll see in a second, there's a lot of really, really valuable, good information that I think speaks very highly of us as a school, us as a community. And as always as well, a lot of things to note that I think deserve further attention. That I am hopeful, following this year's presentation, we can continue to focus on and move some trends into a better direction. So just as a quick one-off, the survey background, for those who are not familiar with it. It has been administered every other year in twenty-five different Metro West towns biannually since two thousand and six. So it is a remarkable data pool. It is constructed and analyzed by the Metro West Health Foundation. It's not our survey, we don't build it, although we do work very closely with the foundation. They do truly a remarkable job of really encapsulating what the life is like of a Medfield high school and a Blake middle school teenager. And the same could be said for pretty much every teenage student throughout the Metro West. Each off year, which this is one of the off years, myself and a number of people spend a lot of time really, really delving into the data. Like I said, to just understand what the trends that we're seeing coming and to then react and hopefully better plan for the next year. So that we can better serve the students that we have under our purview. With that said, another sort of exciting thing that the Metro West survey, or the Metro West Health Organization is embarking on this year is a data dashboard. Which to me sounds thrilling. Long story short, they have digitized the entirety of the survey. And in doing so, they're developing this data dashboard, so we're getting trained on it currently. But so it sounds, we will really be able to delve like even deeper into some of this data. In a second, we'll go into some of the disparities that we'll see just in regards to different racial disparities, different socioeconomic disparities. And with this data dashboard, it looks like we'll really be able to see just all of these disparities and how different identities are being affected differently throughout our town. So it seems to be an even more valuable tool, I think, what got a lot of our decision making. So these are all of the survey topics that our kids are asked. The entirety of the survey, it takes about an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour for each student to complete. And as you see there, they essentially ask our kids about like everything that they have ever done or thought about doing during their time here. Each one of these topics is then broken down into a full data presentation. Years back before we got the digital, the digital reports, we used to get these binders of data that would be like this big. And so I, I simply highlight that because it is impossible to go through all of that data, especially in one presentation. Truly, I, I won't even begin to touch the surface on many of those things. If I don't touch on a specific topic tonight, it doesn't mean that it's not important, it doesn't mean that it's not worth delving into. It just means that for the sake of this presentation, there weren't necessarily trends that I thought were immediately relevant. There weren't different things as opposed to last two years, the survey data and things like that. So if you do have questions, if you would like to know something further, please by all means, reach out. I have a lot of this stuff kind of memorized by this point, so I'm happy to speak to these certain topics. If there are certain things that I'm going through and you would like to know more information, there are a lot of slides here as well. So truly, if there's one or two slides that you would like me to spend more time on, feel free, raise your hand. If you would like me to explain exactly what's going on, I'm happy to. If you would like me to shut up and go as fast as I can, I can also happily do that, you just say the word. So this was Medfield's response in two thousand twenty-three. At the high school, we had five hundred and seven participants and at Blake, we had five hundred and fifteen participants. It breaks down to about seventy-two percent of our entire high school body participated at that time. And eighty-nine percent of the Blake middle school body participated at that time. Truth be told, both of these numbers are down by comparison to both the two thousand twenty-one survey and pretty consistently across the board. At the high school, the feedback that I received, frankly, our kids were kind of surveyed out. And I think we just so happened to take the survey at kind of the wrong time. It was coming on the heels of them having a lot of, a lot of surveys, a lot of discussion about some of these things. And honestly, a lot of our kids were just kind of burnt out and they wanted to motor through it so that they could spend time on homework. We also had a number of parents opt their kids out. With that said though, even though the numbers are down, the data is still very, very valid. So in speaking to the Metro West Foundation, they like cosign and rubber stamp this data with every fiber of their being. A lot of kids, when I speak to them, they don't think that the data is valid because I think they speak to one another and if they, everybody thinks that other people lie on the data. Or, you know, they're just not honest because there's no real incentive for kids to be honest with things like this. But the reality is, this is purely anonymous data. And the Metro West Foundation does a wonderful job of cleaning the data, making sure that it sort of matches with our demographic body. They take out the things that they know are obviously jokes, that are obviously lies. And so I think they've been able to provide us with really, really accurate or as accurate data as one could reasonably assume with all of these questions. What we see too is that the trends are pretty consistent over time. And so we can really speak to the fact that this survey looks similar to how it did two years ago, three years ago. And that a lot of these trends also mirror nationwide data. To me, it just once again speaks to the validity of all of these numbers. So some notes and highlights. So if anybody was here during the two thousand twenty-one presentation, one of the things that was noted was that was taken pretty much right on the heels of COVID. So all of these data sets are just moments in time. And it's especially important to know that this is, once again, a moment in time coming on the heels of some real significant spikes in two thousand twenty-one. So what I think we'll see here is kind of a return to form for a lot of these trends and a lot of these data points. What I've done for some of the more, as I see it, interesting trends is highlight what a six-year window within the survey has looked like. So what we were hoping for a lot of these things, we expected mental health trends to rise. We expected some alcohol and substance abuse numbers to rise and things like that in the two thousand twenty-one data, just based on kind of the state of the world. What we were anticipating however, is that hopefully we'd be able to really identify some need. Certain things within the world would calm down. And some of these days would go back in line with where we would have expected them to be in two thousand twenty-one. That is in large part what we're seeing, and I think that six-year window really speaks to that. But why this is such a valuable tool as I see it, is there are certain trends that even though we are living in a more normalized world. There are certain trends that you will see that are still very troubling. And things that have not gone back to a level that we would necessarily expect. That once again, just speaks to how important the work that we are doing as a community to really attack some of these concerns. So to begin, the first topic is the substance abuse topic. And if you see here, I know this is a little bit difficult to understand and read. But these are line graphs over time that show the lifetime substance abuse of Medfield High School students. So this top graph here, this green line is alcohol use. We have cigarettes are the, so if I can get this. Voila. It's all the better. So the cigarette usage is the red line, you can, I think, read that over there. And as you can see here, across the board, every single usage trend outside of very small upticks in prescription drug misuse, all fell considerably. Going back to the data trend that we anticipated in two thousand twenty-one, we saw this trend start to go downward. And the grain of salt that we said at that time was, the likelihood is a lot of our kids would not have had the same access as they would have previously. So while it looked very, very good in two thousand twenty-one that we had this major spike in usage across the board in two thousand eighteen that was beginning to go down. Truth be told, we kind of anticipated to see a spike once again in two thousand twenty-three, once things got back to normal. The reality is however, that's not the case. So especially with things such as alcohol, electronic vape products and marijuana use. Our kids have consistently stopped using them over the course of their lifetime in really, really significant ways. So I think this really speaks very positively to the work that we're doing here. This is perhaps unsurprising, this is just lifetime substance abuse by grade, this is lifetime use as well. And I think this kind of mirrors the trend that we have always seen. It mirrors the trends that we see kind of in high schools throughout America, that as our kids get older, the likelihood is they're going to use substances with a higher frequency. I don't think this surprises anybody and frankly, those numbers are actually lower than they were in two thousand twenty-one, which again, just mirrors the downward trend overall. The lifetime substance abuse by grade at Blake has also remained very consistent, which was great to see. I think when we get to the mental health portion of this data, there are some troubling trends. That we have seen a lot of mental health issues start to begin younger, which is an issue that's happening nationwide. Truth be told, I sort of anticipated some of our substance abuse numbers to also rise at Blake. Because that is apparently an issue that's happening nationwide as well. But as we can see here, those numbers have really stabilized and frankly, remain very, very stable throughout time since two thousand and eight. Our lifetime substance use here at Blake, as opposed to the rest of the Metro West, is also very promising. We see here that only six percent of our We see here that only six percent of our Blake Middle School students had ever used alcohol as opposed to ten percent of the remainder of the Metro West. And although the disparity between those numbers and the rest of the other substances is not so great, we can see too that by and large, our students at Blake are not accessing substances with the same frequency as other Metro West districts. This here is the most recent data, though, from the high school when it comes to our high school students' lifetime usage as opposed to the rest of the Metro West. So you will see here, especially in comparison to the Blake data, it's not as promising. For the past ten years, every single year that I have been here and then some, for whatever reason, Medfield students tend to drink at a higher, a higher lifetime frequency than the rest of the Metro West. It has been the case. It has been a consistent number over time. And I think what we see usage data, something appears to be happening from the jump from Blake to the high school where, whether it be access, whether it be just the normalization of things, that we know there are major upticks in usage from Blake to the high school at pretty exponential levels. Now with that said, this number of forty-three percent of our students drinking as opposed to forty percent of the Metro West, while that doesn't look great today, if we compare it to the data that we had in twenty twenty-one, that disparity has actually lessened. So this six percent disparity, this is from twenty twenty-one, that was more in line with what we had seen for kind of the entirety of time that I had been here. A six percent jump and major other jumps in other products usage from our students when we compare them to the rest of the Metro West. So once again, just going back to the most recent data, we do see those disparities, but we now see our electronic vapor products being used at a lower level. We see marijuana usage being at a lower level, and that disparity with alcohol specifically has gone down as opposed to where it was before. Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do. We're not celebrating the fact that only three percent of our students drink more than the rest of of the Metro West towns, but it is certainly a step in the right direction, especially considering all of the attention and time that I know that we've spent as a school and as a community to really identify some of these issues. So like I said, the notable trends, I think I've already touched on some of these, but just some other pieces that I found to be very interesting here. Our lifetime and current EVP use has really, really plummeted. There was a major, major spike nationwide in twenty eighteen. And I think we saw data rising, 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 and it spiked to really unprecedented degrees in twenty eighteen. If you kind of remember back then, that's when vaping was relatively very new. It was being marketed as this like harmless alternative, and it was everywhere. What we've seen as far as our data is we've done a really good job, I think, of really highlighting the perceived risk in our students, and when you highlight the idea of perceived risks, we know that usage then tends to go down. So our numbers have decreased at a more exponential level than surrounding towns. I think likely because of a lot of the conversations, a lot of the education that we bestowed onto our parents and to our, onto our students by and large. Alcohol data is also down across the board, and our marijuana usage follows very similar trends as well, so all good things. Like I said previously, just kind of this equation of perceived risk plus socialization equal, equalizes usage data. So if kids don't perceive much of a risk and if it is normalized within our community, we see a major uptick in usage. What we have seen and what the data seems to point out is that our kids are perceiving these things to be risky. It's not as normalized within town as it used to be, and therefore the usage data has gone down. The unfortunate bit when you look and really delve into specific demographic data points, though, within substance use is that we have really troubling trends when you look at some of our marginalized individuals. So if you look at our queer students, if you look at our socio, our lower socioeconomic students, students, students of non-white ethnicity and race, each one of those demographic groups tends to use at a much higher rate than their in-group peers. And I think what we will see throughout all of these different pockets of data is those spikes and those trends do appear to be pretty consistent. So when we go to the end, we talk about things that we need to focus on, I do think the specific focus and targeting many of our marginalized individuals who we know feel marginalized and unfortunately behave and experience real significant hardships within our town, the more attention that we can spend to really incorporate them into our community, the better it's obviously going to be for them and the lower that we're going to see these numbers plummet even further. The last thing that I did just pass over quickly that I meant to point out, the daily use when it comes to EVP has remained consistent over time. What this says to me is that while people who are trying it is going down, those who are really becoming addicted, those who cannot shake that addiction has remained consistent. What we know especially about vaping, what we know about these products is they are highly, highly addictive. And so unfortunately, it looks like those who are trying things are going down, but those who are trying are becoming addicted at the same degree that they would have been previously.
Russ, isn't there a point in between the testing that they ask us if we want to incorporate other parts of, you know, any questions or other parts of the survey? Because I'm wondering now, like, this was a couple of years ago, so I think vaping was kind of on its way out a little bit. I wonder if we can incorporate those zen patches this time, you know, it seemed like the nicotine patches or something that, the pouches, I guess they're called.
Yes.
That, that kids are using now, maybe we can incorporate that next time.
Yeah, there's no doubt. And honestly, I think this, this happens every year where we will sit around and think of like great questions that we want to ask, and we will send them to the Metro West Foundation, and they'll tell us that, oh, we've already written like ten questions because we've gotten these same concerns from everywhere else. But it's definitely something to note, and we do have plenty of opportunity to go back and forth with them. If you look at the, the board of, of all the pockets of data too, that's where the gambling data came from this year. Because sports gambling was legalized, and so many people were very curious about what the sports gambling data looked like from their students. And so that entire section of data just came from the back and forth that we had, not we specifically, but the communities that were asking for more questions. So moving on, the violence and the bullying section, more good news here as well. We see this is the bullying and cyberbullying numbers stemming from the high school in twenty twenty-three. And these have also remained pretty consistent over time. If you see the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, there were significant steps in the right direction. We have slight upticks in bullying within the high school. Not as much of an uptick that I would personally say is statistically significant. The likelihood is, I think that just stems from socialization. I think that stems more from everybody being back in the swing of things. And my argument for that would be if you look at the twenty twenty-three data, by comparison to the twenty eighteen data, we are still below what appeared to be a bit of a spike at that time. So this is the bullying and cyberbullying data from Blake, and we see once again a slight uptick based on, or in comparison to twenty twenty-one. But still, we are at lower rates from twenty eighteen, so it does still appear that we are moving in the right direction. If you look at our data as well, when you compare it to the rest of the Metro West, this is high school data, and again, just good news. Our kids report being bullied less than the remainder of the Metro West. Obviously, it's still something that I think we all care very deeply about. It's something that we pay a lot of attention to. Even though our name, our numbers perhaps look a little bit better than the rest of the Metro West, these numbers are still far too high, I think, for anyone's comfortability. So it's not to say that like, great, we've solved the problem. It's just to say that the attention that we have placed on some of these issues does continue to make a difference. And this is dating violence, which is some new data that the survey deemed was important, and I think this is really nice for me to see as well. I know that the wellness curriculum in the high school has spent a lot of time delving into dating violence, which frankly is a very difficult topic, I think, to teach, and it's a very difficult topic for students to sit and listen through. But what we see here is that our dating violence numbers by comparison, again, to the Metro West are pretty significantly lower. Back to the bullying conversation, it's not to say that, you know, we've solved the problem, but I just think it goes to show that when we have identified a need, we've been able to teach to it, and that degree of education has really made a difference for the lives of our students. Moving on to the mental health section of the data, so shameless plug, this is kind of my bread and butter, so please like cut me off. I can talk about this until the cows come home. But this is where you'll find the vast majority of the information, and frankly, I think year after year, substance abuse and mental health is where we get the richest data sets. And oftentimes, these pieces are linked as well. So if you see here, this is the mental health data. See if I can move this over here. A little bit of a better understanding. So from the high school, similar to the previous data sets, and they're just line graphs over time. This top bit here, the life being very stressful over the past thirty days. We see that there is a pretty significant uptick when compared to twenty twenty-one. We have generalized anxiety symptoms, self-injurious symptoms, depressive symptoms, and then suicidal ideation here as well. The way that I read this too, and I think it's important to note once again, that you look at the data in twenty twenty-one almost in a vacuum, just based on how unique life was for many of our students. In twenty twenty-one, our students were not reporting much stress at all, which is kind of ironic, I think, if you really think back to it, but from an academic standpoint, I don't think in November twenty twenty-one, we had really gotten back into the swing of things academically. I think we were still kind of easing our kids in, and their reported stress was obviously much less as a result. You'll see there too, many of the other depressive, self-injurious and anxiety symptoms, though, really significantly spiked in twenty twenty-one, and I don't think that's a surprise to many people. I think there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of news articles about, you know, the mental health epidemic that was stemming from the pandemic, and I think we saw that here really significantly. What I think is a really positive trend, however, is our stress has gone up. And I don't think that's surprising again, because we are back in the swing of things academically. But many of those other mental health determinants have continued to go down. So I think they're not in line with where we wanted them to be in twenty eighteen. If you look back to the twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen graph, we saw really significant trends in a downward direction. So students were feeling less depressed, they were feeling slightly less anxious, they were feeling less suicidal, they weren't engaging in self-injurious behaviors to the same degree that they were in twenty fourteen. And then all of a sudden, twenty twenty-one happens, and everything kind of gets blown out of proportion. So our data in twenty twenty-three, it's obviously troubling. It's obviously not where we want it to be. But while I don't think it's necessarily a trend in the right direction, I think when you compare it to twenty twenty-one, it looks better, and I think I'm optimistic that in short order, we will get back to the trends that we saw between twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen. So like I said, just taking a quick six-year sample here. This is all data from the high school and to the point that I just made. We had twenty eighteen, major degrees of stress. So if you look at the twenty twenty-three data as opposed to that, our kids are not experiencing that same degree of stress. The twenty twenty-three data, as you will see here, kind of falls in the middle of all of these data points. So we were really moving in a positive mental health trend over the course of about six years. Everything got blown out of proportion, and so we have had to do a lot of work to even begin discussing getting back to that trend. But the fact that this data is not in line, but in the middle of these kind of six-year samples, I think is a positive sign moving forward. And being the eternal optimist that I am, I would imagine that next year's data set will hopefully continue to see these numbers go down, probably more in line to that downward slope that we were seeing between twenty fourteen and twenty eighteen. So with that said, from the mental health standpoint, and this is, I live it, and so to me, like, a lot of this data is not alarming. I think I talked about anxiety, depression, suicidality, self-harm, day in and day out. I do recognize, however, that in speaking to the public, any mention of mental health is alarming. When you look at the data and it looks terrifying, and the reality is, it is terrifying. It feels like things are completely out of control. And it feels like we have this like pocket of like deeply, deeply mentally unwell kids in Medfield. And the reality is, it's not a Medfield problem per se. It's a major, major issue that we're just seeing nationwide, and we are especially seeing here. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, my job was created ten years ago in response to a lot of this data. The beautiful part is my, that it didn't just stop there. To Dr. Marson's credit, mental health and student well-being has been a major, major focus of his. And to speak frankly, I, I think he has put his money where his mouth is, and I think we'll go into this in a second. We have really been able to embark on a number of mental health initiatives and well-being initiatives. And while obviously these numbers are really, really alarming, and they are nowhere close to where we would want them to be when you compare our data to the rest of the Metro West, I think it says something very positively about what we are doing as a community and what that focus towards mental health and student well-being is doing. So if you see here, unfortunately, our kids are much more stressed than the remainder of the Metro West. Our kids tend to present as being more anxious. But I think the fact that the other data has not spiked to that same degree tells me that we are having really good, productive and honest conversations about that stress, about that anxiety, and we are able to, I don't want to say treat it necessarily, but manage it in a way that stops it from snowballing to some really physically dangerous situations. And so like I mentioned before, these numbers are still very, very troubling. But if you take a step back and sort of see all of the initiatives and everything that has been done, I do think there, there is a bit of a silver lining, and I do think there is a positive note to gain from this as well. This is specific demographic data. What we've known for a long time is that our girls in this building struggle with their mental health significantly higher than any of the boys in this building. Once again, it's not a Medfield problem. You may have seen, there was a pretty big article that came out, I believe it was last year, just about the specific mental health epidemic that teenage girls are facing, and those numbers nationwide are just sky high. So our numbers do mirror that unfortunately. But like I said before, we knew this in twenty twenty-one. We addressed it, and for better or worse, I think we are seeing a lot of these numbers normalize in ways that are encouraging. So this is the data from twenty twenty-one. Once again, you compare it to the data from twenty twenty-three. We are still seeing really significant disparities between genders in our building, but those disparities are getting back to more of a normalized set. So once again, it's not to say that like we've solved the problem, but knowing that this was something we addressed in twenty twenty-one, it is encouraging to see that some of these numbers are at least slightly better than where they were. This is mental health data from Blake. I guess the good news is that obviously these numbers are significantly lesser than they would have, or than the Medfield High School numbers, but once again, I think you find similar trends where things were looking positive, and then in twenty eighteen, both here and nationwide, we did recognize a trend that mental health issues were beginning to present younger. In certain areas, we did see significant spikes in twenty twenty-one. The unfortunate piece about this, and you'll see the data in a second, this data at Blake has not normalized to the same degree that the high school has. So if you see here, some of these determinants have students listing life as being very stressful, students presenting as anxious, students presenting as depressed are more in line with the twenty eighteen data, but unfortunately, the self-injurious behavior, serious considerations of suicide and making a suicide attempt have not gotten back to their twenty eighteen normalization numbers, or better yet, they have. But we haven't been necessarily able to manage those symptoms to the same degree that we have the other ones. Within the past couple of years, I know a lot of attention has been placed on middle school mental health and well-being specifically. Nat, Nat Vaughn does, I feel like every other day, he's doing some kind of like connectedness activity and really building a community within that building. I know we've hired a full-time adjustment counselor. We have a full-time, a full-time school site down there. We have three guidance counselors. It's not to say that we don't have enough. It's not to say that the work that they're doing isn't good. To me, this just speaks to a nationwide trend of things existing younger and younger and younger. And it's just something that I think we need to pay continual attention of, and it's something that I think oftentimes gets ignored because when you see the adolescent mental health epidemic, people do tend to think of the high school age, and people don't feel necessarily comfortable having those conversations with younger ages. So just to say, I think more work likely needs to be done. So just to say, I think more work, like, needs to be done for us as a school, as a community, and probably as a country to make sure that these numbers continue to go down. These are the gender differences. We see similar disparities at Blake, but not nearly as much. So it does, I think, speak to probably the social pressures, the academic pressures of the high school likely exacerbating some of these data points for our females within this building. The last bit of mental health data that I think is very important though, stems back when we talk about the demographic data of interest. If you look once again at the substance abuse, you see major disparities with all of our marginalized students using substances as a, at a much higher level. The same can be true for all of the mental health determinants as well, and then unfortunately, much more significant disparities. So if you look at our queer students, they experience both stress and anxiety at significantly elevated numbers. That number there, so forty-one percent of our queer students identified their life as being extremely stressful within the last thirty days, as opposed to twenty-three percent for their hetero, for their heteronormative peers. And then generalized anxiety, forty-three percent, as opposed to twenty-one percent. Youth with disabilities, so that could either be a learning disability or a physical disability, follow very similar trends. Interestingly enough, there was no statistically significant trend when it came to race or ethnicity. It appears regardless of your race or ethnicity, you are likely to be the same degree of stressed and anxious as everybody else in this building. Looking most specifically at the depression, self-injurious, and suicidality numbers, I think is really what hammers home just how hard it can be to be a marginalized student within this building. Our queer students, forty-one percent of all queer students in this building met clinical criteria for depression, as opposed to seventeen percent of their heteronormative peers. Thirty-two percent engage in self-injurious behaviors. Twenty-four percent, so one in four of our queer students had seriously considered suicide within the past year, and eight percent had made a suicide attempt. Youth with disabilities follow a similar trajectory, although it's not nearly as exacerbated, but it's still pretty significant. Where you see thirty-six percent as opposed to nineteen percent, and all those numbers I think speak for themselves. Symptoms by race are very interesting as well. So like I said, there is nothing clinically significant when you look at the stress and anxiety numbers, but when you look at depression, when you look at suicidality, when you look at self-harm, for whatever reason, there appear to be significant spikes with our diff, with just our non-white community here. So the Hispanic and Latino identities, twenty-eight percent identified clinical signs of depression. Twenty-five percent of Black identities, other and multiracial identities, twenty-three percent of that student body met the clinical significant symptoms of depression. Twenty-one percent of our white student body, and only eighteen percent of our Asian students. And all the suicidality data pretty much follows those exact same trends as well. Now that I have like significantly freaked you out, I do want to go to the protective factors. I want to pause for a second, mostly to get myself some water and buy myself some time. That is a litany of data with a lot of things and a lot of bars. Does anyone have any questions? Is there anything, thank you, is there anything that I can speak to a little bit further before we go into the good news?
I just had a quick question. So I'm assuming, right, the survey is anonymous, so I take it, they don't put their name in, they select their race, their ethnicity, their LGBTQ plus, but then you also mentioned at the beginning, like socioeconomic. So are they specifying so?
Yes.
I mean, I, I feel like I just, I think as you get older, you might be more aware, but I wonder how valuable that data is for a sixth or seventh grader.
Very, very good point, yeah.
You ask it, so I didn't know if it was actually like connecting to something else, but then randomizing on the back end.
No.
But they are self-selecting that data too.
Yes, yes. Anything else while I get another sip of water?
I had a quick question around the stress slide, one of the stress slides. So, I mean, I feel like we hear a lot of similar things in regards to the stressors that are happening to our students. So I guess, understanding that like, you know, some of the workload, the course, the course load, the expectations, like none of that is really wavering. So what are the things that are, are happening that have helped this stress come down just a little bit, right? Like, I think we can all agree, we would like to see it down more, but like, what are some of the things that you feel have helped that trend kind of go back to where we want it to be?
Yeah, that's a really, really good question. Frankly, I think that we're having really good conversations. And there's a number of different things that I think could likely contribute to it, and we'll sort of talk about the protective factors in a second. Our kids, and this has kind of always been the case, our kids are so connected here. They're connected with adults in this building, they're connected with their peers, they're connected with their friends. They stay active, I think, from an education standpoint. They know how to take care of themselves, and I think very quickly they're able to identify maladaptive habits and likely can correct, course correct in a way that probably lessens their compounded stress, or they can't do it because they're so connected. They're having really adult, I think, productive conversations with supportive people in their lives that can really help them mitigate that stress. I do think too, we also had a schedule change at the high school, which has been really significant. The fact that our kids have more time built into their day to get work done and to sort of manage whatever their extracurriculars are, I think has been just anecdotally like a lifesaver. And I also think that a lot of our, sort of pat ourselves on the back, a lot of our educators really bend over backwards to accommodate the needs of our kids. And so I think it's become far more commonplace that if our kid is struggling, I think they know that they can communicate directly with their teacher in an appropriate way that I think grants them reasonable leeway to lessen that stress. So it's not to say they're not, you know, erasing the work that they have to do, but I think they're able to work with other individuals to create a timeframe that is more workable for them, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So like I said, without further ado, the good news, the protective factors. So you, you're kind of, that was going to be my big reveal, that like, we're so connected here, so spoiler alert. But that, that is the case, and that has been the case within this community since I have been here. And if you like walk through the halls of Blake or the high school, I think it is so abundantly obvious that this is the case. I've been in other schools, and I think you have kids with their heads down, and teachers with their heads down, and teachers only know the like ten kids in front of them at any given time, and they don't really get to know them. Teachers in this district, I think, go above and beyond when it comes to really expressing earnest care about their kids. And kids report that they feel that. I think this data here really speaks for itself, that our kids feel close to people here, they feel that they're enveloped within the community. They feel as if they're being treated fairly, and they feel safe, which if you don't have psychological and physical safety, you can't have literally anything else. So I think we do a really, really nice job within this district of making kids feel seen, making kids feel appreciated. This is the Blake data too, which, as I said, I, I don't think it's kind of remarkable to me. I don't know any middle school student like across America that would openly admit that they're like connected to their teacher. And yet, we have seventy-five percent of our Blake middle school student body that says that they feel close to somebody within that school. I think it's really a testament to Nat Vaughn and just how much effort he puts forth on making sure the kids are connected. From a like bureaucratic standpoint too, I know we all, both at Blake and the high school, consistently, we have people getting around a table and identifying students of need who might not be connected. And the amount of support that like gets thrown at these kids, if we think that they are not connected, or if they think they're in trouble, it can be like overwhelming frankly. But I think it's really been a consistent mindset from the top down to make our kids feel seen, to make them feel appreciated. And we look at our data by comparison to the rest of the Metro West, I think it just speaks for itself.
This one, it's interesting, I'm, I'm looking at the other side, comparing Blake and the high school. The difference between us, you see it in each category. Where Blake is, the gap is larger.
Yes, yeah.
Subject feels safer in that school, the gap's the same there with every one of them. We all see that, and I'm not saying we don't see it here as well.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, if you, if you go back to the high school data, I think obviously, like, we would like to see all of these numbers be at a hundred percent, but I think the...
The overarching, like, when you look at just the purples, they're, they're pretty close.
Yeah.
And if the gaps, it's a different piece of it.
Yeah, and, and I think it just, to me, that, that more speaks to middle school kids. And how hard, I worked with middle school kids for many years, and I am no closer to being able to connect with any of them today than I was like ten years ago. They are envious unto themselves. So the fact that we have been able to really, really heighten that disparity, I, I think speaks very, very highly as well. This is just kind of more of the same, so just school adult support. Like I said, to the point that you made, when our kids have a problem, they are talking about it. And to me, that is the first of many steps of moving all of these conversations into really healthy territory. What kind of shocks me, and the fact that it is even ninety-two percent within the Metro West is amazing, but that ninety-three percent of our students had a parent or a non-school adult to talk to about important things. Ninety-three percent of our student body at the high school have somebody that immediately, on an anonymous survey, said like, yes, if I needed something, if I needed someone to talk about, I have somebody in my life. Should it be a hundred? Absolutely. But it just once again goes to show that our kids who are struggling, they're having conversations. And I really, I give a lot of credit to the people in this building, I give a lot of credit to people in this community and in this town. Especially over the past decade, I think adults have been more open and able to have those conversations in a productive way. I think when I, frankly, when I entered into this district, mental health in general was a real taboo topic. Nobody knew how to talk about it, nobody wanted to talk about it, it was very much, you know, it's not happening here, it's probably happening over there, but we don't necessarily want to admit that this is something that we need to pay attention to. And, and in short time, I think the adults that I have seen have really stepped up to take care of our kids in like really remarkable ways. And I think, obviously, that the data in certain areas is still really alarming and troubling, but all of the good that's highlighted here, I think really stems from the work that the community at large has done. So we see here, it's just, once I, once again, more of the same. This is just Blake data that just speaks very highly to the fact that kids have people in their lives to talk about. The peer support, once again, our kids are much more connected with one another than they would be for the remainder of the Metro West. All of these numbers also spiked really significantly when you compare them to the twenty twenty one data, which is probably no surprise. We saw kind of troubling dips in all of these things, just because our kids hadn't had the ability to be socialized. All of these numbers are way more in line with where they would have been in twenty eighteen, which just goes to show that our kids did not forget or lose the ability to socialize. Once you put them in front of other kids, once you put them in front of tier, in front of, in front of other peers, our kids are able to make friends, and they feel really connected with one another. These are just additional areas, I'm sort of getting to the end here, just little bits of data and information that I think also filters back into the protective factors conversation. I think by and large, this is kind of just more of the same, that our kids are taking care of themselves in kind of really impressive and mature ways. They are spending a lot of time doing homework, which is probably not much of a surprise, but they're also spending a lot of time doing healthy and productive things beyond this building. A lot of time on extracurriculars, a lot of time participating in volunteer or community service activities. I, I will say, grand of Saul, I do think some of our kids are a little too over-scheduled, but conversation for another day. What's important about this bar graph as well, if you look at the sleep numbers, which I think is fantastic, in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty one, our kids were not getting nearly enough sleep. And what we know, sleep is a key determinant to pretty much every other factor of well-being. And for whatever reason, within the past couple of years, our kids have really rectified their sleep. And I think with the, the start time changing for next school year, I think the hope is that that number will continue to move in a more positive way, because kids have more time theoretically to sleep. This was very interesting to me. Over time, we've seen our kids' social media use and smartphone use really dip into much more manageable, much more healthy levels. So in twenty twenty one and twenty eighteen, our kids were perfectly in line with the rest of the Metro West, and it sort of seemed like they were spending a lot of time, the three-plus hours on social media was very, very common. The three-plus hours on gaming was very, very common. And what we've seen is that those numbers have dipped pretty significantly below the rest of the Metro West. At the high school, we instituted a cellphone policy, I think a lot of parents have had really good conversations about cellphone use. And what we know too, is that a lot of the time, cellphone usage and mental health and all these other areas of interest are oftentimes linked. Physical activity as well, our kids are very, very active. I think it's rare, frankly, that a kid at two o'clock goes home and doesn't have an activity to do from this district. Our kids are very involved, they're very active, and I think we just see a lot of really positive determinants that stem from them being able to take care of themselves. I will whip through this extremely fast, but I just sort of wanted to highlight some action steps that have been taken over the past probably about six to eight years. Frankly, I threw like as many things as I could think of onto each of these bullet points here. Some of these were there for a year, some of them have been there for ten years. But it just kind of goes to show, once again, that all of these data points, I think, allow us to have really healthy, productive conversations about what we need to do to support our kids. And so from this data, I anticipate further conversations will happen, will identify further areas of need. And in two years from now, when I'm yapping in front of you all again, I anticipate having even more initiatives and things that we'll be able to put forth for all of you in response to this data. With that said though, the continued areas of need, I, I think are pretty apparent, and they are very similar to what they were previously. Mental health, substance abuse, and the specific demographic attention to lessen many of those disparities, to me, is kind of the number one thing that we need to focus on. Not to say that the other pieces are not important, not to say that they are not worth discussing, but those are kind of the number one areas that we're seeing major disparities, and therefore where I believe that we really should be spending a lot of the time focusing on. Prior to concluding, are there any questions? Are there any pockets of data, are there any topics that you'd like me to go further into? Or anything that in my mind sounded great, and it didn't make any sense as I was speaking it out loud?
Is there anything we do in, in Medfield or that any other school does that's like gender-specific? It's like we know that our young girls are struggling more with mental health. Is there any program that exists in school or nationwide or Metro West that's like, is, I just, I feel like that's some, like, I don't, I don't feel like that they're being pulled out and it's a bigger problem for them? Is that, is that anything that happens or?
Yes, and I'm actually, I may put some of the students here on the spot if they will. There's a lot of gender-specific clubs that I believe, I, and I think they're relatively new that are centered specifically around mental health, whether it be disordered eating, whether it be depression, suicidality. There's, there's a club called Girls Who Start, there's a club called Girls Up. There's some nods, there's something like that, there's like a lot of like girls blank.
So clubs is kind of how we're trying to cover that, and I guess the question would be like, how well-attended are they, right?
Honestly, I think they're very well-attended. It's not to say that there are more things that need to be done. And I, I, I hear what you're saying, like, are there school-based opportunities to target the gender disparities? And off the top of my head, I don't, I, there, there very well may be some, and I might be blanking. But I think when it comes to gender-specific initiatives, it's fallen more into the club spectrum than any kind of like but I think when it comes to gender-specific initiatives, it's fallen more into the club spectrum than any kind of like school-based initiative.
Oh, yeah.
Because I have the same question, so I think at like Blake, when one of the bullet points on here is like whole school efforts to improve understanding of LGBTQ need. I think that's really important, because yes, the clubs are important, but it's almost like, how do you get, sort of, talk about inclusivity and make sure everyone is understanding, like, what it's like to be in some of these marginalized groups, whether it's gender, whether it's LGBTQ, whether it's ethnicity, and like to your point, and how do we provide support in a more, almost like specialized way for those groups that we know are marginalized?
Sure, sure.
And I do think like that's one of the ways of Blake, I think, is probably doing a nice job about it, or at the high school, I know we have sort of the DEIB task force, I think that's really important, because it's like, we just hope it gets better for those groups. It's like you really need to be targeted, not just on those groups, but then also how everyone else can be more inclusive and...
When it comes to like marginalized communities as a whole, I do, there's a lot of work that is being done from a curriculum standpoint, and I'm sorry, I don't know if I misinterpreted your question, but...
No, we're just going slightly down, because I, I think there's, there are things for LGBT and our queer students.
Gender, I was putting all, because I think all three of those are right, ethnicity, LGBTQ, and gender are all showing up at like higher levels, so I just put them all as marginalized.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, and I, and I think, I think those, some of the, what we consider marginal, marginalized groups are being targeted. I don't know that our girls are, just like, so that, that's why.
Yeah.
I've never heard of it, I just, we know it's a problem, maybe it's something we need to look at.
It's a very reasonable question to ask, because I think, you know, speaking frankly, like, I, I don't think white women tend to be lumped into the same marginalization conversation as you would students of, you know, non-white ethnicity and things like that, not to say that they shouldn't necessarily, but to your point.
But we know, we know their numbers are higher, right? It's the places we don't want to be, and I've never heard of like, well, what are we doing for them?
Right, and they are, I mean, women are marginalized, right, across any certain thing, like, yeah.
Well, it was a, it was a, it was a very alarming, two years ago when you presented this, was very alarming to me at the time as well. So it was the number I was looking for when we started this, was the only, pretty much the only number. Yeah, no surprises with the others, so I'm glad you asked that question. I, one of the questions I have is other, other types of, of adult availability that would help improve the connectedness and maybe even improve connectedness with marginalized groups as well? You know, as we look at, we've changed our schedule a little bit, we, you know, are there, one of the things I'm continuing to hear, some other districts I'm connected to, is availability of staff on unstructured time, whether it's before or after school, or informal availability for students and to adults that they're connected to.
Yep.
And has that been discussed amongst your peers of the districts? And what does some of that look like as we look at contract negotiations over the next few years, and so on?
I mean, I think Flex Block fills that right into the day, right?
It does, yes.
The ability for us to travel and, and meet with our teachers.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's definitely opportunities. I would say devil's advocate is there's never enough opportunities. And there's only so many hours in the day, and I mean, speaking from my own point of view, it's very hard to find time within the scheduled school day where you're not doing something productive. That's not to say that like building relationships isn't productive, but especially at this point in the year, it, it oftentimes does feel like the very little bit of downtime that you have if you are not utilizing it to like check off many things within your to-do list.
I'll give you a scenario, like, you know, some of our marginalized folks could be, you know, not have the support at home, may not be eager, so maybe, you know, collectively ones you find, maybe hanging out after school, but finding connectedness with a teacher who may be grading late in the day.
Which I, I do think that happens, and I think it may be more unstructured, I don't think...
And I think that's where I'm kind of leaning, opportunities for unstructured.
Sure.
Unstructured, you know what I mean?
And what, I guess the impetus for the schedule change was, we're looking at, because I think the data is something like ninety-four percent of our kids are involved in after-school activity, whether it's a sport, or band, or chorus, or theater, or club, whatever it is. And they had a hard time finding the time to meet with a teacher after school because they're off doing something else. So that was, so part of that schedule change was to bring that into the school day, because before, forever, there was this, you had to have seven classes a day here and all that stuff. We tried to back away from that, you know, and off, in, in an effort to make sure kids had time during the day to connect with teachers and get additional help if they needed, and they could still participate whenever they were doing their whole school. So that was kind of the, the thought behind that and, and the, and the work that the high school folks did on that.
I do think, just recent discussions that we've had, just among the staff, we are talking about how to maybe build more formalized time for some of our marginalized students to get together. I know Blake has run an affinity group for students of color for many, many years, that's been very successful. We've talked about different ways that we can sort of incorporate that initiative at the high school. I don't want to speak on behalf of our assistant principal, Brendan Hagan, but it's a conversation we literally had like two days ago, that it's something that we think would be really, really important, and I think there are many, many other opportunities that we would love to embark on, and I very much anticipate some of those things being in place by the time that I, I'm hopefully allowed back to speak to you in a couple of years.
Just one other thing, and I think Russ did a wonderful job, and I want to thank him for it. And I know that we're pressed for time, but I don't want to gloss over the fact that Russ has four slides of initiatives that we're doing in the district to support this. So please take a look at that, you know, when you can, I know it's, it's posted online with your materials, but did a really good job putting all those together, so you can kind of see what the district has done, is currently doing, and will be doing, you know, upcoming initiatives.
And I do also, I very much welcome, if you have questions, I'm such an abject dork when it comes to this stuff. I could talk about data and the Metro West survey forever, so if you have more questions, if there are specific points, if you're thinking about this, and you're like, oh, you know, here's this one like weird data question that I have that I didn't necessarily want to bring up now, like, do you have any information on that? Please let me know, and especially when it comes to the dashboard. I, I don't think there's any degree of data that we can't find some semblance of for you.
I guess the one last question I had is, you know, what do you, I mean, this is every two years. You know, and it's incredibly hard data to uncover because of the nature of what you're asking students to reveal. You know, I'm sure you're all tired of being surveyed about how you feel all the time, you know, and I can appreciate that. You know, but are there, are there some other indicators that you use? Like whether it's participation levels, each, you know, all the time amongst your, the school administration that look at, you know, what are the indicators that you may use across the student body to look at what's successful and what's not successful?
In terms of our initiatives?
Yeah.
I think we, there's a lot of different ways that we either internally or externally really try to take critical looks at what is working and what's not working. Frankly, this data is a great way to do that, but I think we have a lot of back-and-forth communication with our students about what is working, what's not working. I think our kids oftentimes provide us with very direct feedback if something is not working and they don't want to do it. And by and large, I do think we listen, and we sort of are able to restructure things as a result to better serve them. So whether it be like, we have a lot of Google Forms that ask feedback of kids, or just those direct conversations, I do think there are at least many opportunities for feedback.
Thank you. Russ, I, that was, and I may not, you may not have to answer it directly, but I just, I just think about, what would you want in an ideal, like, additional supports from the community?
That's a loaded question.
I know, I know, so I don't, you know, but I, you know, like, where I think about it specifically is that, like, my eyes, like, trending in the right direction is favorable, right, and even seeing the, the gap. I think a lot of our energy is right now going to online behaviors.
Yeah.
Right, so we're just kicking off that task force, that, you know, is there an outcome that you're thinking about? When, when, because that, that, a big part of that task force is also helping to educate the community. But, you know, it's, I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I just think, a- as we did this, I remember in twenty-one, we had a big readout in April or May, and it was really well-done, except nobody came. Right, it was really lumpy out. Yeah, so, you know, I just, it was more just, whether it's today, or like, th- this is a lot to take in, we can kind of say, hey, now that we've read it out, these are the types of things we want from the community. How, you know, how can we do it, like, I think of that as parents, what can I do with the high school kids?
Yeah.
To make it better.
Yeah, and honestly, I, I've taken up so much of your time already. I could probably go on for another forty-five minutes about like my dream wish of things that we would want and have, I think. It, it's hard, it's always hard, because at the end of the day, like, we are still a school, and our, our sole responsibility is to educate our kids in however you want to define education, and I think I kind of get lost in the weeds sometimes, thinking that like we should be spending half of our district's budget like solely on mental health supports, which is like not realistic, nor what our kids need. And so I think there's always a balance of, you know, the likelihood is, do our kids need more mental health support? Perhaps, do we need more communal support? Maybe like an out-facing community outreach, something like, there, there are things that I think we can brainstorm forever, but ultimately, it is a difficult balance to strike between what I think our role is as a school, what the priorities are, and what, what we kind of do next. So I don't think I necessarily have a direct answer as far as like what I would love to see next stemming from this data, because I would love to see plenty of things. But I also think too, in saying like, well, I want this, and I want this, I think it would be great if we did this, it also devalues the work that we are already doing, all the initiatives, initiatives that we have put in place. And so I think it's probably worth reconfiguring and sitting down and having honest conversations to the points that were made about what is working, what resources we do have, how we can maybe better utilize those resources, and if there are still gaps within the schools, the communities, like, then how do we fill those gaps? So I guess I don't have a direct answer, but I think I have a process in mind for how to better answer that question.
No, it's, I mean, I, I didn't expect a real clear answer. And I think each of us probably, or my head, like, my head went to that, that connectedness, that you guys make a lot of effort in the schools, well, we all make a lot of effort with, you know, student kids who aren't ours, you know, just all the little things. No, it's, I appreciate the time, and like, when you see it, this is, so, there's a lot of passion as you walk through it and what you're doing.
Yeah.
I appreciate, I know the talent, appreciate it, we all do.
Yeah, thank you, this presentation was great, and I think...
My pleasure.
Full of, I, I was happy, I was looking at your presentation from last time and the notes we had from last time, so I was happy to see that some of the things that we were concerned about have started to trend in a more positive direction. There's obviously still work to be done and places we would rather see some of those numbers, but I think that it was nice to see some of those place, some of those start to go back a little bit to what we were hoping for.
I was happy too, I, I couldn't bring myself in front of you guys, back-to-back presentations with bad news, so glad I had some good things to share.
You guys have anything else?
Thanks, Russ.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Have a good rest of your night.
You too.
All right, still talking about students, next up, we're going to hear from you guys though, so I'm happy to welcome back our student advisory. Like last time, we're going to start Class of Twenty-Twenty-Five, so Michael, you're going to go first.
Hello, my name's Michael, I'm the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Five representative of the school committee. So since I was here last, we had our winter dance, that was actually last Friday, that was really successful, we had a ton of fun. We had this like small raffle incentive to kind of keep people there a bit longer, which I think worked really well. The junior class student government also helped us out like with setting up, so that was nice. And other like things that we're doing, we're trying to plan our senior talent show, which we're kind of starting to realize right now, it'll be sometime in the next calendar year, probably end of winter, beginning of spring, something like that. And then just for our class as a whole, we're slowly getting back our college applications, like early decision, early action, and then other people are still applying to colleges, so that's obviously a big thing in our minds, college, you know. Overall, I think we're good, we're excited for what is to come.
How's, how's cell phones been?
I think overall, it's more like strict, people just put them in the, in the, in the caddy. We, I actually just had a conversation about it in sociology class. Some people are still against it strongly, some people say, yes, we do think that we're more productive. I think it just varies from student to student, but overall, I, I believe it's, it's a good, a good thing.
What was the raffle?
It was, it was gift cards to various places, like Starbucks, Dunkin', I think Amazon was there too.
All right, thanks. All right, Tess, you're next.
Hi, everyone, my name is Tess Bocky, and I'm the representative for the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Six. So for school before break, everyone has kind of been gearing up for the last week before break, which is always super tough, because teachers want to get everything in. Although we have a lot, teachers have been very understanding, have been checking the test calendar and trying to find like other dates and working with teachers to find a date that works best for us. And then our grade recently had a meeting with numerous guidance counselors and to talk about like the college search and like other opportunities to look for after college. And we have more meetings planned soon, and like specifically ones with like classroom-sized groups, so I had one of those today. So they just kind of talked about like specific apps to use and like all this stuff. And then in the fall, there were a lot of college representatives coming to the high school to speak. I know a lot of people in my grade went to them, and they learned a lot from those. And then my grade also had an opportunity to take the PSAT in the high school in the early, in early November, which was a great experience to have, to have going into the actual tests. And then, as Michael said, last Friday, the juniors and seniors had a winter dance, and I think they did a great job planning it, and I know a lot of people had fun.
Thanks.
Tess, was the PSAT really a great time? Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you, next up, James.
I know it's the PSAT in junior year, they took it in junior year?
Yeah, I know, I used to take it in sophomore year.
Hi, my name is James, I'm the representative for the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Seven. I know I wasn't here last meeting due to inconvenient game timing, but here now. Since then, we have a recent raffle coming up for a basket full of like merchandise and these custom kind of seats that you sit on, the leakers that give your back support. So we put an order for those in bulk, and I'm not sure when those are arriving, I think maybe late December, early spring, not sure. But that raffle is coming up Tuesday, Monday of next week. And, yep, we plan on also doing events in the spring, such as like yard games for primarily the Class of Twenty-Twenty-Seven, as also a fundraiser. And then, of course, as prom is creeping around the corner in the spring, March, I believe, we're starting to get ready for that. Yeah, we've sent around Google Forms and surveys, primarily targeting like direct problems within the school, and we haven't gotten many responses, so I believe that's a good thing, not sure. But, yeah, nothing with phones, nothing with bathrooms, haven't found any direct problems that students are concerned of, so, yeah.
Thank you, and Lily?
Hi, I'm Melissa, and I'm the freshman representative. I first like to start talking about the freshman fundraiser. We were thinking of doing a fundraiser with Italian grocery, this would like support like the local business and then also make money for the freshman class. We had like a hard time picking, because like the sophomores are doing like metro merchandise and like around the holiday season, it's kind of like a big thing. So we decided to support a local business and then the Italian grocery. And another thing that's happening at school is a hand drive that like student capsules are seeing, and that bin's been involved where like, there's like teachers' names on each bin, and the person with the most like hands gets to like wear costumes in school. So it's just, that's mainly it for the freshmen.
Any favorites to win?
Thank you, Lily. As always, you guys are welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go, whatever you prefer to do.
If you have any questions about the survey.
Never seen that guy move so fast.
All right, next up, we have FY Twenty-Six budget first draft.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael, you have it on on Zoom?
Great, thank you. So we've been hard at work the last few months, looking at our FY Twenty-Six budget. I think that we'll go through the numbers a little bit, we just finished it up this afternoon. The numbers resemble a lot, they're a lot like the numbers we had at this point last year, so I'll go through that presentation for you. The principals and directors and department chairs, they put their budgets together, and then we've had all the meetings. Michael and I, we've had twenty-three meetings with the directors, principals, and department chairs to go through what they want for their initial ask. So lots of times, it's going through all their supplies, so we started zero, and they they build it based on that. And then any 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 supports or staffing that they need, and we go through that entire process, and then we start to build it based on that. Just some reminders for tonight, this is the first pass, this is our draft of FY Twenty-Six, this is not the superintendent's recommended budget. So the number that you see at the end of this presentation will not be the number you see in January, when it becomes fine-tuned over the next, you know, six weeks to get get to the recommended budget at the end of January. You know, the Medfield School Committee takes ownership of the budget after the annual budget hearing, and it's not final until town meeting. So some initiatives that we have embedded in the FY Twenty-Six, first year of of our transition, full-day kindergarten, we we moving staff out of the revolving account and putting them into the operating budget. Obviously, we have school and safe, school safety and technology items in there, professional development. Michael has worked with the capital budget committee to help to fund facility improvements and then continue with our technology. And then our solar project looks like it's finally going to start in June, we might do some preliminary stuff in December, but we'll begin in earnest in June, once the kids get out. I know there was a conversation earlier in the fall, they wanted to really start it before the snow, and we and this board and and us, we all made an agreement, this would be done on non-school hours. So to to think about, they they looked at doing a a satellite parking lot over at Memorial, and and that's not what we signed up for. We signed up for a summertime project, so that's gonna begin once the kids get out of jail. Some assumptions that we have going through this process, that the federal entitlement grants we level funded, which have a couple of slides coming up to show what the FY Twenty-Five amounts are, Chapter Seventy will be level funded, again, this is a timing problem for us in Medfield, is that we build our budget based on the early budgets, and then when the final budget comes out, our our budget is already approved at town meeting. So that additional money we get in Chapter Seventy, again, it's just timing, it should go directly to the town, it doesn't go directly to the school and their budget. Reduction in revenue due to our full-day kindergarten decrease, so we take those, we we reduce that tuition, and now we're taking two positions out of that revolving account, putting them into our budget, and then the circuit breaker, which is the money we use to offset special education, will be funded at seventy-five percent. So those are the assumptions we made building this. As we always do, we have grants that offset our operating budget, so these are the FY Twenty-Five numbers to give you a sense of what we hope they are for for this year and FY Twenty-Six. Six seventy-four for our special education entitlement grant, which we pay a lot of staff members of that. Early childhood special aid grant is eighteen thousand, the Title Two, which is supporting professional development at Twenty-Two Eight. Student support, student support and academic achievement, which is also some consultant and PD at ten thousand. So total grants of the federal government that we're looking at right now, seven twenty-five. And then we have other receipts that offset our budget, I won't go through all those, but in total, right now, we're projecting three-point-one million in grants and receipts to offset the costs of our operating budget. And, you know, we always do at the at the January meeting, when we do the public hearing, we'll have the actual numbers of staff we pay out of that, so you get a sense of what it is. It's typically around fifty or so staff members we pay outside of the operating budget. Our drivers are typical, you know, eighty-plus percent of every school budget is is personnel, so that's definitely one of our drivers. We always want to make sure that we have professional development available for our teachers, staff, and administrators. We're currently near the end of our our Language Arts pilot that's happening, K to five. So textbooks, if we decide to do a new program next year, textbooks will be a big part of FY Twenty-Six if we go in that direction. Contracted services, transportation, student services, with increase in tuitions are all driving our budget this year. Again, not unlike budgets around the state right now. So our FY Twenty-Five budget was forty-three, our initial budget right now, again, our draft budget, forty-five, six, four, nine, or an increase of two-point-five or five-point-eight-nine percent. Again, at this time last year, we're at five-point-nine-nine percent with a similar number and increase. So I know, we know it's a big number, and we know it's not where the warrant committee wants us to be, our current budget gap with the warrant committee guideline is almost a million dollars, very similar to where we were last year, so we have a lot of work to do in the next six weeks with this. We'll refine that and go through those numbers, and the next meeting will probably have a different number for you. And I was, and definitely by the thirtieth of January, we'll have a a new number for you. Built into this five-point-eight-nine percent increase, again, those two full-day kindergarten moving to the revolving account, we've added a full-time BCBA, board-certified behavior analyst for the district. I think, again, not any surprise statewide or nationwide, we're seeing a real increase in behaviors at the elementary level, and we want to make sure that we have staff to support those students. Again, kind of a piggyback on what Russ has talked about, we have a part-time adjustment counselor at Dale Street, we think we need a full-time one there. We think that the the needs, definitely support that. We definitely have increases in special education tuition across the board, and some of those rates are set by the state. If you remember a few years ago, those rates went up over fourteen percent, they're much lower this year, but still is an increase for our budget. Software and software licenses are going, are increasing each year. One of the things that we're looking at is is the communication, looking at different communication systems that would cause us to look at software increases in that area, so, for instance, looking at a communication that would allow us to communicate directly with parents. Teachers communicate with parents, have it archived, so it's all on one system, and we're not having three or four different kinds of apps that teachers are using and districts and and schools are using, so we want to kind of standardize that across the board. And by doing that, that will allow us to not have to have different software licenses that we use for individual things. So it'll be kind of consolidating it all together, and we're working with the faculty advisory, the superintendent faculty advisory, and leadership team to kind of look at that. And this month, we're gonna have some demos to look at what we might might choose method. So we'll we'll bring you on board once we we've looked at a couple of the, a couple of the the companies that we've heard some of the good things about and get demos on. The cost of living increase in steps and lanes and longevity, we know our collective bargaining agreements all have those embedded in those. Increase to transportation, both general ed and special education transportation, which we seem to have every year. And then supplies and services, everything seems to be going up, as we know, so all of those in there. So we we don't have a lot of increase on supplies and services, because a lot of it is level funded this first pass, but we we do definitely have some that are included in different areas, usually around technology. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but we know we have a few school committee meetings before we, a couple before we do the the public hearing. Warrant Committee is gonna meet with us in February, they sent a tentative date out this week, and we have the annual town meeting, which happens in May. So happy to answer any questions, it's still in these beginning stages, and we're still a long ways away from where we need to be at the warrant committee number and warrant committee target.
In meeting with your staff around asks for next year, were there any surprises from anybody?
I don't think so, I I think a lot of it, at the elementary level revolves around supporting students that are dysregulated. You know, we've actually have have made some some changes at Memorial that will start in January, kind of midstream, because we had to pivot, because what we were doing wasn't working. So kind of reallocate staff from different buildings to make sure that they have the support that they need, which, you know, we have to be nimble, we can't just say, no, we're not gonna do that, because we don't have the budget for it, we have to, you know, make sure that staff can support kids and kids get what they need, so we've done a little bit of that, but it's it's all been behavior based at the elementary levels, for sure. Which is, and it's not just us, it's everywhere, seeing just an increase in dysregulation in students at a younger age that is across the board, it's it's really something that we're concerned about, and I think, I was at a executive committee meeting for M A S S today, and there's twenty superintendents in the room, and we're all talking about the same things, we're all saying, so it knows no demographic, it knows, you know, no socioeconomic, it's across the board. That we're seeing just different types of behaviors that we've never seen in elementary school. So I think the support that they've asked for, I think is needed, I support them with that, and, you know, you see it every day, so we gotta figure out a way to make sure that we get that additional support with a one-million-dollar gap right now.
Yep, just a clarification to this, does not include any, the impact of any insurance increase is is reflected in the the percentage that warrants is willing to give us, correct, because this town covers that?
They do, and I actually, I saw the the numbers, it was four-hundred percent, Michael, something like that, it wasn't the four percent, the insurance increase from what I saw, no warrant committee, so it's not outrageous, that's a pretty good increase. I mean, I've seen years where it's been ten, eleven, twelve percent, you know, the district, but you and the regional, Leo, you you get all that, so.
Correct, yeah, we have the same insurance.
Anything else?
Anything else? When you go over, you think you have any, and the other thing, too, is that we're we're doing something a little bit different with our excuse me. Excuse me, with our with our budgets this year, is that we're doing a three-year projection as well. So we're not only looking at FY Twenty-Six, we're gonna project three years out to get, just to make sure that we we can provide the town with some of that planning, I know Michael has done that for the town in there. They've been winning these awards the last couple of years, and Michael's been integral in that piece with the school side, putting all that, all that, all those numbers together. We're gonna share that with you as well, a three-year projection, so we get a sense of where we're going, and and we can plan for that, especially around the impact of going to free tuition on full-day kindergarten, we've talked about that last year, and it will have an impact going forward. And I believe, did we put that enrollment in this one, or was that the last meeting? Is the enrollment, enrollment, it's in this one, right? The enrollment that you have in there, you know, some of that 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 group that we talked about, that group of kindergarten kids in a couple of years, that they're still there. And the other thing that's new this year in that enrollment is that there's a bigger group coming, a big group coming a couple of years after them as well, which we we didn't expect that, so that will definitely impact, you know, what we do in terms of space that we have at Memorial and what we can use for space and class size and all that kind of stuff, so that's what we're working on, that's a couple of years up, but we need to start planning for that now. That's really gonna be something that's gonna be a challenge for us, if if that does hold true, we do get, you know, two-hundred-and-forty-plus kids in kindergarten, so. Happy to answer anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Any other items since posting?
No, ma'am, sure.
All right, we'll move on to old business and discuss the mobile phone, social media task board. Dr. Mars, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure, so we had our first meeting this week, and please, Will or Tim, jump in at any second. I thought it was a great kickoff, we had a lot of interested parents that are excited about being there. Nat and Holly are are the co-chairs, so that's that's going really well, we did some planning last week, and you know, I think it's an exciting group, I mean, one of the good things, we do have Jill Walsh coming to our next meeting, so she's gonna to meet with the group and talk to them about some of the things that she spoke out at 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 the Medfield talks, but also kind of help us and guide us into some of the the work that she's done in other districts and other other schools, so really excited about that, I don't know if you guys want to add anything, but I thought it was a positive kickoff and a lot of parents that are excited to do the work, for sure.
I agree, I think it was a good group, I think we're fortunate that a lot of the, you know, their parents and community members, but a lot of them have, like, you know, jobs and degrees and things that are pertinent to it, like, social workers and things like that, and do it. Another thing I just kind of want to want to name, I guess, for everybody, it's a very unique committee in that it's like, you know, there's not like a goal, there's not like an end, we're trying to look at something that we know all the data shows it so far is hurting our kids, and, you know, in terms, well, it's it's just, it's a big committee, and there's not like an end goal, which is something I kind of like struggled with being on it, and some people asked that question at our first meeting, but I just want to, like, name that, if anyone in the community has questions, you know, ask a neighbor, ask me, someone who's on it, but just like, it's a little unique, in that we we know technology is a problem and a great thing in schools, we know social media is a problem, and we're just trying to look at all that stuff, so it's just a little unique. So I just want to kind of name that with that committee.
Yeah, I had similar, like, actually, I did have a note on that, there's one I thought it really was, you know, a great group, a lot of enthusiasm. And the general theme through all the intros was like, they want to make a positive impact. Right, so I think, you know, that's a great outcome of Bill, or Will.
That and fear, fear was another.
Yeah, no, I was, it it was interesting, I I I do think even towards the end, it is a complex topic. You know, I think it will be worthwhile as Nat and and Holly usher the group along, the three lanes that we've talked about, you know, call it in the classroom, in the community, and if we want to make recommendations around policy.
Right, great.
I think that gradually would, you know, maybe those are focus groups or or whatever. And I, it is somewhat up to us as a committee, too, like, what do we want, you know, like, we'd love to, my assumption would be, you know, come May or June, they're gonna report back to us, right, and and we, you know, would want to know. But but that's that's the area, I think it might just be worth committing to work with Holly and Nat.
Yeah, I mean, they, we've we've met and we know what, I guess, it was more of a kind of get-to-know-you meeting versus, like, here's what we're gonna be doing, you know, and I think that they they're pretty aware of what we've talked about and what we've met about with kind of outcomes and those kinds of things, so I think that will be the direction, for sure. But to your point, Tim, I think you might have mentioned it, if this isn't, this isn't like a six-month committee, this could be like a couple of years, just kind of, because it's ongoing, there's lots of issues that come up, it's ongoing, and it's, you know, I I did like the fact that people named it as a community issue for all of us to deal with, not just a school issue. You know, it's something that we all have to kind of wrap our heads around and and try to, you know, support kids and support families, so I did like that part of it, too, that that was pretty clear across the board, everyone felt that way.
Yeah, it was, I I mean, it was refreshing, like, people are all on the same page. So so I'm I'm really interested to see where it goes. We did also clarify, we've talked beforehand, but maybe even having one of the liaison from that committee trying to meet with the separate PTOs, like, get the word out mid mid-February, this is what we're doing. Because it's it's the topic, it's hard to bring it up when people just want to weigh in on that. So it's good, thank you for kicking it off.
And I also, Will, I was impressed, too. Everyone at my table.
All right. Up next, we go to the SBC.
Oh, is there any news there?
I don't know, did you hear any news? Leo, how about you, did you hear any news?
Nothing new.
Nothing new since you came. The good news is we got back into the MSBA, right, or sorry, we're invited to the meeting tomorrow. We're invited to the meeting tomorrow, and then we'll know for sure if we get, but at the meeting, they could say you're not in it.
Generally, they could. They always could.
Okay, so I'm just saying, like, I'm trying to know, is this, okay.
My email's locked in load, but it's not going until we get the vote.
We haven't been invited in the last few years, and the last time we were invited, we were.
Correct.
Okay. Only ten other towns are at the meeting tomorrow, if that helps.
That, that was.
Okay, so then that's, yes, okay, that's a positive sign, and they're not gonna be like.
These are big high schools.
You're asking a question, I feel like those guys are like, pretty good, just get over the, see what happens tomorrow.
Yeah.
There was a lot of excitement last night, obvious reasons.
You had, you had, you had the meeting last night?
At SBC last night.
SBC last night, correct.
We we timed the meeting for this week on purpose, knowing that we would probably hear something about making them determine what our next steps would be, you know, as a committee, so. Yes.
And then, should we get in hypothetically, then it goes to vote again? We start the process.
The process starts again.
Would be, exactly. So we would be going into the module, module one?
Module one would be the kickoff, and most likely, there would be an ask at town meeting.
Right, the goal would be a town meeting to ask something.
For fees or additional feasibility dollars.
Yeah, it's it's time, it's time, we're back, we're back at the beginning, and we're gonna be looking at what we can reuse, but we're back at the beginning.
What do we, I mean, in an ideal world, a town meeting voted in May of Twenty-Six? If you can get through things, or is that even?
It depends. Yeah, it depends, it might be impressive.
Because, again, being in their program, there's lots of major benefits, and one of them, though, is we have to, there's a lot of stones that are there with them.
Could be a special time, yeah.
Yep, all right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it could be the fall twenties.
Yeah, it could be a fall, it could be.
Okay.
Most likely, most likely it'd be because of the size of the project, it will be the largest project they've undertaken. There's a lot that goes into it.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about years that we still have to maintain.
Right, no, for sure.
Right, like, okay, this is great, but we're still looking at
Yep.
three, four years from now.
And that's why we we continue to put capital expenses into Dale because
And then we have to keep expecting money there.
Teachers are in there, so.
Yeah, we just don't know. Well, it's good news though. The committee, I think they've done a good job.
Great news.
Not even drastically different, we just talk, sometimes like that committee started without really an agenda, other than, okay, let's get to know each other and let's make sure we can progress that's my order.
I have the appropriate time to ask about it, but Dr. Marsden, what is I was not, I was informed about the the future of FAF does not look good. And so what the impact would be on Dale for the MAP program?
Yeah, we're
As I brave, as I brave the darkness to get to the door.
No, we've given, we've given MAP more space so they can continue their program. One of the things we're going to try to do is my communication with the net yesterday was tried, they're going to try to get like a storage container or something over there just to put all their stuff in. And we're going to find a spot for that, that kind of thing, so. Because right now they got all their stuff in, I mean, it's it's all our kids, right, so it doesn't make any sense not to support it.
Oh, no, that's what I'm saying, like, what's the, it's going to be a long term.
Stuff is all near the gym.
Yeah.
Like not a long-term solution and they have to be there for four years.
Yeah, definitely not.
Or forever, I don't know.
So yes, we have the call tomorrow and then the SBC meeting in January eighth, I think, right?
And we have another meeting on the eighteenth of December with MSBA.
Correct, December eighteenth.
Right, next week, yes. Kind of a orientation, going over the process kind of thing, so.
Yeah. But positive news?
Yes.
Very big shifts.
Sure. Second bite of the apple. Doesn't always happen.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Keep on watching.
Um, so on to communication and community engagement, so we haven't talked Medfield talks, we haven't talked about Medfield talks, right? Since our last meeting?
We did our last meeting.
Didn't we?
No. Remember fourteen?
When was her talk?
I thought we did.
Jill Walsh's talk was between, was not, was between me, our meetings.
Yes, it was, because I was, I was away for, I didn't go.
It was the week after.
It was after our meeting.
Yes, okay, that's what I thought too, that's what I have in my notes, okay.
How well attended was it?
Because it was the night of the soccer game too.
Yeah, there was a soccer, we had the soccer conflict, yeah.
Do you count fifty?
Fifty-five, I counted.
Which is great considering, considering that, right.
Competition. And yeah, the feedback's been, I would say, positive from the parents that went. I had to show up a little bit late because I had a conflict myself, but I found her to be, the thing that I think struck me the most was that she's clearly like living this right now, which made her very relatable.
Right.
Do you know what I mean? She wasn't talking at the parents, she was able to be like, oh, I had to do this yesterday and here's what happened, right? And like, no, it's not going to be a just, you know, no, no, no computers, no nothing, no anything, right? Like, you have to understand what the what the risks are, but then be able to also like sometimes let your kids play video game type stuff, right? Like, so I did appreciate her approach there.
Yeah, one of the things that she said to us in September, which are along those lines is if 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 you're a school district that says you can't use phones at all, you're banning it, they're locking them up, you have to realize this percentage of your students that use that as their way to kind of get through the day, right? That's who they are, that's what, so what are you going to do for those kids now? You know, and I thought that was a really good way to frame it, and that's why we kind of took the approach we took where we feel like kids can, during the, during their class, they're focused, but if they want to walk in the hall when they're in between classes, look at stuff, that's fine too. You know, there's got to be a way to self-regulate and manage this, you know, and I just I I just think she's great. I mean, she's, she's really, as you said, living it with her own kids, living it with the research. She she just actually found out today, she's speaking to all superintendents in the state in January. She's doing a whole workshop with them in the state, which is great. I think people will love her, so. And she'll be here in January too, which is great.
So understanding that we brought back Medfield talks, like do we have any course of action of something we'd want to do in the spring? And again, if we don't have that right now, like just keeping that in the forefront of what else we'd want to do or anybody else that we might want to try to bring in?
Get that group back together. I don't know if anybody thought for holidays to do that.
Okay.
And then, just, I I just, we thought that Jill was the really one to get first, you know, but I think we leave it open to people if there's something that they want to see or some topic they want to talk about. Like we had executive functioning years ago that was really well attended.
Okay.
So I'll just, you're certainly welcome to come to that meeting, you know, we just, we do it on Zoom because it's easier for people. But we try to get representatives from the PTOs, MCP, MMA, CPAC, so. That's, it's worked pretty well. So I think if we do two this year and then shoot for three next year, you know, just, because three was our our cadence before and that seemed to work really well, but if we do two this year to kind of get it going again and then shoot for three the following year. There's always stuff people want to talk about, so.
That you feel like people have talked about that you think would be helpful?
Tech and social media kind of dominates. Most people's fear for their children right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I think you could, I think that that is one, but I think just doing like the mental health survey, I think there's some key themes on there that wouldn't hurt, whether it's around right, even if you look at the bullying numbers, over thirty percent of our kids are feeling bullied every consistently at school, right? So it's like how to identify that in your child who's not sharing it with you, how to look, like, right, I do think maybe I would like to see some theme that like showing up in a percentage of our kids and maybe just talking about that.
Dave, anything that you think students, I mean, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but you can think about it, but is there a topic that you would like to, maybe have an expert that come in and be informative for both parents and students?
Yeah, make parents more informed.
Yeah.
Yeah, what do parents need to know?
What do we need to know?
About students?
Yeah.
Things you guys like might struggle with.
Um, I think, what you said, definitely like time management with social media kind of, like even me, like it's a struggle sometimes. That definitely, um maybe just like keeping like balance with like doing like new stuff after school. I don't know.
Yeah, kids are overscheduled.
That's kind of, actually, I was thinking of overscheduled.
That's why our rates are so high, like
Time management, yeah.
Like we're overscheduled, so like of course our stress and anxiety levels are higher than other people.
Yeah.
And it is like
Is there, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is there a, is there a, a strong push on students to take on roles for college acceptance, like leadership role? I'm hearing a lot about you got to be a leader in something, so you got twelve captains of the mock trial team and you got like like, because you have to put it on the application. Is there, is there a push for that?
Um, I don't think like anyone directly says it, but I think people feel like pressured in themselves to have like different leadership and like things they're involved in, especially like related to college, for sure.
Is there an influx of new clubs being proposed? Like I said, they founded the, you know, the left-handed book reader club, you know?
I think the pressure's coming from parents in this town. I hear this conversation all the time at the middle school level, not from the kids. From parents saying, oh, my child's joining this club because they need to do this for college and that's the scary part. Like, so, right, I don't know how we fix that and change it, but
Like a college admit, like
Like what, what actually is needed, because I hear it probably weekly and like some type of conversation and my child's doing this because it's going to look good.
So they, I mean, they do have admissions people from B C and other places come in to talk with parents.
Right.
You know, they'll do that.
There may be a college person that could really say, what do you really need?
But those, those admissions people always have like a, right, if you bring them from a certain school, they have a slant. You almost need someone who's like independent from that.
Like a, like a college coach.
Oh, coach, yeah.
Yeah, college coach.
Or the authors.
If we have that, then everyone's going to hire a college coach.
Yeah, or the authors, the guy who wrote like Where You Go Is Not Who You'll Be and some of those books that are like this is a crapshoot. Let's like love our kids and be here for them and not personally present a club.
Yeah, it doesn't matter where you go to school as much as like your resilience and what you do with it and like remembering that, like and not every school is the right fit for everyone. I think that gets
Yeah, there's some authors, there's some books out there.
Yes, there's some buried.
We can read in this.
I mean, you think about it and don't hesitate to come back to us, we even email, you know.
Yeah, that's fair. This doesn't have to be answered today, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Looking for future topics.
You have all a break to think about it.
Yeah. We expect a full report and an essay.
Anything else on communication, uh, community engagement?
Not really. I mean, I've had, I was in the, trying to get to the WLPPO, it was always, it was great. We did, we had a meeting, a meeting we we have where we talk with PTOs, MCPs. Really good, good feedback and no, no good communities.
I did get to the middle school PTO, but it was short and but, you know, there's some things going on, working closely with Nat, but I didn't catch too much, it was a very short meeting.
I went to the Fall Ball that MCP went on, so they did a great job of, right, organizing again, obviously it's a one of their biggest fundraising events, which then all that money comes back to us, so. It was well-attended and very nice again.
Um, any informational items?
Just the two items I put in your packet, the the NSDAQ Fall twenty twenty-four enrollment is in there, which, you know, take a look at it if you want to put this on the agenda for a future meeting, we can certainly talk about it more in depth. But I think it's pretty consistent what we've seen, except for that larger group coming kindergarten in about four or five years that we wasn't on ones before. And also the TSC memo that is in in your packet for the competency determinations. Interesting meeting this morning, commissioner came, acting commissioner came and associate commissioner came. And we talked a little bit about using MCAS as a competency determination.
Yeah.
So they were, they were supportive of that. The attorneys in the room were not supportive of that, so I think there's one of the things that we, which I learned today, which they were very clear about, that they need to be more clear with everyone else about, is that you got to look at this as a, as a two-pronged process. One is graduation requirements that we already have now that are in our program studies of the high school, these are graduation requirements. And the second prong that people are forgetting is a CD, a competency determination, what's that going to be? And, because that's what MCAS was, so you still got to figure out what that's going to be. If you determine that that is going to be what you have as your graduation requirement, I think that's fine. But it's got to be in parallel, two separate processes to kind of look at that, so. I think we're good for twenty twenty-five for for the graduating class, but we got to really figure something out for twenty-six and beyond because there was a lot of people in the room that felt like I do that we should keep MCAS and
Well, MCAS, I mean, we're still keeping MCAS.
Well.
Like you're still taking the test.
They're still taking the test.
Right, I'm just saying, like, there's still confusion about when we talk about, when it's like, right, people
The incentives to do it, if you're going after like the Abigail Adams
Scholarship.
Scholarship, right, that's a, that's a reason to like
Seal it by literacy, that all still counts, you know, those kinds of things, but you're going to see those tenth grade scores stay wide just one, like, a hundred percent, you know, that's what it is one of the
They're only going to graduate, right? They're not going to give an effort.
Exactly, and then
Yeah, it's just hard, right, like, because exactly, you say you wouldn't care. I'm like, of course I would still want to take it and care just as much, so like, right, it's like an interesting well, I don't think it's nothing, so I still think the MCAS matters, I think anything matters.
I don't think
Like, right, but I, right, like, that's the thing, so it'll be interesting to see what, like, student data.
Yeah.
And so I don't know, I mean, I'd love to keep it mattering here, you know, but I just don't know whether or not it's going to be the right move for us. We have, we all have to talk about this, but
You took the test, would you take it seriously regardless?
Yeah, I think I would still like want to know if the score is back.
But I see your point. I think it's just a mix of people's personalities, right? I think it doesn't have anything to do with like academics, just people's personality of how they view standardized testing.
And the people are sophomores in high school.
Yeah. But even if you're a sophomore in high school.
And there's, there's interesting language in the legislation too, which talks about mastery of courses taken and it's not really defined what that means, so it doesn't, it doesn't say in there they have to pass the courses, it's just courses taken.
Really, really
So it's just really wishy-washy and not great legislation and
We may not even have a department of legislation anymore.
No, this is a state department.
Yeah, this is a state though.
It's a state, not the federal.
No, I know, but it, it, right?
So, there is a lot, are you on the MASC list, sir? Oh, good.
All right, are there any other informational items? Do you have an update for us about, about anything?
Um, I, one thing that's going on in the school is we're doing the can drive, I know one of them mentioned it, but it's kind of different this year because you put it in like certain teachers' boxes and so it's kind, we're trying to get more donations this year. And the teacher with the most cans in their box will have to wear like an inflatable snowman around school. So that's one thing, and I think everyone's really excited about winter sports starting, that's another thing. And for the seniors, definitely, like, there's been a lot of talk of college acceptances and those results that are coming out. And also, like, what Tess said earlier, like, we're kind of gearing up for a big week ahead of us before winter break, but I think everyone's excited.
Great soccer season, man.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
All right, you guys have anything else?
Nope.
Yeah, actually, I was disappointed, the only thing about the soccer, the the amazing job, the only time I'll ever say it, but you weren't on the front page of the paper, I didn't understand that. Did anyone else notice it?
Don't read the paper anymore.
Craziest thing I ever said, it said, boy soccer gets to semifinals on page one, the big pictures. And then you go to the very back and there's like two paragraphs.
I didn't, I didn't see that.
I agree, should have been on the front.
Should have been on the front.
Yeah, second, maybe first, more senior doing.
I apologize.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.